Good morning. It's nine AM and I'll call this meeting to order. Carrie, will you please take role?
Chair Brooks.
Here.
Vice Chair Ariscotta. Regent Boylan.
Present.
Regent Brager. Regent Brown. Regent Carvallo. Here. Regent Cruz Crawford.
Here.
Regent Del Carlo.
Here.
Regent Downs.
Here.
Regent Goodman.
Here.
Regent McMichael.
Here.
Regent Perkins. Regent Tarkanian.
Here.
You have a quorum present.
Thank you, Carrie. Regent McMichael, would you lead us in the pledge this morning? Thank you. I'd like to recognize and acknowledge somebody new sitting with us here at the dais, Special Counsel Michael Wickson, who will be with us here today to help us with OML. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate your time. When I move on to Agenda Item Number One, Public Comment. For those who'd like to call in and offer public comment, please dial 669-444-9171 and enter Meeting ID 928-4944-5069 and passcode 555-555. Is there any public comment at GBC?
There is no public comment at GBC.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at the System Office in Reno?
There is.
Sorry, thank you. Good morning. I'm Jim New, N-E-W. I'm President of the NFA. And I'd like to start out by saying thank you. We're grateful to the campus administrators who have recently announced that they support the 11% COLA for next year. We hope and urge other campus presidents to follow their lead. We're also happy to see in Item Four on today's agenda that the proposed revisions for Title II, Chapter Five have been modified, and they now ask you, the board, to decide whether changes to the salary schedule should be approved by a board vote or just presented as an informational item. Now, while the NFA urges you to vote for Option A, either option is a great improvement over the current practice that allows changes to be made without public disclosure or discussion. Now, to the best of our knowledge, the scheduled revisions that occurred back in 2022 under the current policy never appeared on a board agenda. At least, we could not find them. As a result, there was no discussion of the consultant's recommendation or the review of the methodology. Had there been a discussion in a board meeting back in 2022, somebody probably would have pointed out that the salary schedules for community college faculty had not been adjusted. And that's surprising because those schedules haven't been adjusted since they were adopted back in 2013. We encourage this board to commission a new study of the community college schedule measured against true peer institutions in communities where the cost of living is comparable to correct this oversight. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Is there any public comments here in Las Vegas? Okay. SES, is there any public comment via phone lines?
There's no callers in the queue at this time.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Two. The board will consider approval of the minutes from July 21, 2023. Is there a motion to approve those?
A motion to approve if there's no additions or corrections.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Regent Brager, seconded by Regent McMichael. Is there any discussion? Regent Carvallo? I'm sorry. Regent, yeah. Go ahead, Del Carlo. Yeah.
I did have a correction and I sent it to Angela. There was, I think it was a verb and something. It was more grammatical than anything, but she has it. Do you see it? You saw it, Carrie, right?
I did, yes. Thank you.
And with that correction, we do have an approval of the minutes. Again, the motion was made by Regent Brager, seconded by Regent McMichael.
May I confirm that the motion in the second would include Regent Del Carlo's correction?
Please do.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarification. Since there's no more discussion on the minutes, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye or yea.
Aye.
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 Those who oppose say no or nay. The meetings, the minutes have been approved. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Three. So this is a Regent Emeritus Award, and the board will consider providing this status to former Regent Kevin Page. The...
Mr. Chair.
Hang on just one second there, Regent Boylan. Let me just finish this opening. Thank you. There was some supplemental information that was provided to board members. Came a little late. That more fell on me than than anyone else. My intention was to be able to, in this meeting, talk about some of the things that former Regent Page had accomplished. He was a vice chairman for two terms and a chairman of the board for four terms. And I can, you know, offer that that is a tremendous amount of time and work and sacrifice in those roles as officer. He was chairman when the first budget for the UNOV School of Medicine was negotiated with then-Governor Brian Sandoval. He spearheaded the university police consolidation, first in northern Nevada, followed by a couple of years later here in southern Nevada. He spearheaded the moving the ENCE System Office from where it was, where they were renting space, to the building that we're in now. He's responsible for the advancement of some of the technologies that we're using, although, you know, it seems simple, but the use of laptops and iPads for our meetings were not used when former Regent Page was serving. With that, recognizing some of his highlights, I will call on Regent Del Carlo.
I'd like to make a motion to award Regent Emeritus status to former Regent Kevin J. Page.
Is there a second?
I would like to make the second.
So we have a motion by Regent Del Carlo to award former Regent Page Emeritus status. That was seconded by Regent Carvallo. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, sir. I've already asked Chair.
Right, and as Regent Del Carlo made the motion, we'll open up the floor to the person who made the motion. Regent Del Carlo.
Thank you, Chair Brooks. It's really my honor to make this motion. When I came on the board, six months after I came on the board in 2017, Kevin became the chair, and he was like the ideal chair to me because he took me under his wing, and for the next two years, I was tutored and mentored and really helped a lot. And I think it really laid the foundation for me to be the Regent I hope I am today. And one of the things I'm really happy about, and I was appreciative that you sent in that thing, even if it was late, I didn't know who got us the board pack and the laptops because I love them. And I remember the days people used to talk about the big books that were printed and mailed, and then it was the disc. And so, I mean, it really helps because having the history right at our fingertips, I do a lot of research and go back. So that was a huge one. And the other one that I thought was really huge that you spearheaded, Kevin, was the police consolidation. I mean, everybody said it couldn't be done. Everybody. And not only was it done, it was done well. And we're still reaping the benefits and the savings. So that alone, the money we have saved, to put you in Emeritus status, to get you business cars and a parking spot, is just nothing. So it gives me great pleasure to support this motion. Thank you.
Regent Boylan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am very glad that Regent Page is getting this award. And I would recommend to him to refuse it just because he was serving at the same time as Regent Levitt.
I caution the board that this individual has not been, this is an open meeting law issue. This individual has not been noticed, he's not given a waiver, and so any discussion of that particular person would be a violation of the open meeting law.
I am not discussing any person. I am discussing what we have done as a board, and I want to make it public that another person that I mentioned in a previous meeting that I sent in an email, and if the board chair...
Again, I caution you, this is a violation of the open meeting law. You're discussing an individual and he's not waived, and any discussion of him or communications with the board is a violation of the open meeting law.
I am not discussing him. I am discussing what we did not do as a board. The fact that we did not give the same award to a previous Regent, no names, okay, but everybody knows who we are talking about.
Again, that's a violation of the open meeting law, and I caution you strongly to stop this conversation.
I am not going to stop this conversation, and you will explain to me how it is against the open meeting law, sir, because it isn't. I am mentioning what the board has not done. I am not mentioning any person. I have stopped. No names. It is what the board and the chair did not do. Even after we were, I requested in a previous meeting, even after I sent out an email, it is the correct thing for this board to do, and we did not do it. And no other board member has thought fit to say that this is not correct. It's all very nice to sit quietly and look nice, but if you're not ready to take up a difficult position, I don't think that we are doing what we were elected to do. So I am not mentioning any names since you told me that, but everybody knows what we are talking about, that we did not do what we claim to be doing according to our policy. That someone with 12 years of experience, two terms as a chair, can be ignored every time? Why is that?
Regent Boylan, we appreciate your comments, but is that before I interrupt you?
That's all I had to say.
You've concluded? Fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
So we have a motion to approve Regent Emeritus status to former Regent Kevin Page. That motion was made by Regent Del Carlo, seconded by Regent Carvallo. Carrie, just for formalities, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Regent Boylan.
Aye.
Regent Brager.
Yes.
Chair Brooks.
Yes.
Regent Brown. Regent Carvallo.
Yes.
Regent Cruz Crawford.
Yes.
Regent Del Carlo.
Yes.
Regent Downs.
Yes.
Regent Goodman.
Yes.
Regent McMichael.
Yes.
Regent Perkins.
Yes.
Regent Tarkanian.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ariscotta.
Resounding yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Yep. Congratulations, Regent Page. And what I'd like to do is offer you a few moments to come to the podium and provide us with whatever comments you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, board members, Chancellor, board staff, and presidents. I am deeply honored and humbled to receive the title of Regent Emeritus. This recognition means the world to me. And I'm grateful to be recognized for this distinction. It has been a privilege of a lifetime to serve as a Regent. I want to express my heartfelt thanks for the title of Regent Emeritus. I would be remiss, though, if I didn't thank my family, my wife Patty, and my three girls who did sacrifice for my time on the board. And believe me, they are very pleased I am no longer on the board. Serving as a Regent has been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life, and I am truly touched by this recognition. This time I spent as a Regent was filled with learning, growth, some heartburn, and deep sense of purpose. Receiving the title of Regent Emeritus is a tremendous honor, and I am both grateful and appreciative. I've had the privilege of working alongside some exceptional individuals during my time as Regent, and actually, Special Counsel Wickson was chair of the board when I came on, and so it's nice to see him this morning. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for bestowing upon me this distinguished honor. It has been an incredible journey serving as Regent, and I cherish the memories, friendships, and experiences that I gained. I am extremely supportive of ENCE and look forward to what the future holds. Thank you for your service, and God bless you, and God bless this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Page. Don't, hey, Regent Page, make sure you don't leave the building. We're going to take a five-minute administrative break. Thank you. Hi. If we want to grab our seats, we'll resume the meeting. Thank you. Oh, perfect. Okay, so now we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four. This is a code revision, and I will call on Interim Chancellor Patty Charlton to walk us through this.
Okay, good morning. For the record, Patty Charlton, Chancellor, Nevada System of Higher Education. And so today, we bring back to you, based on our conversation at the September 8 regularly quarterly meeting, the discussion and revisions relating to the code regarding the development and review of the salary schedules. So as you heard earlier in public comment, there are two options that are before you today. And the first includes Option A, which provides that the salary schedules will be approved by the Board of Regents, and then Option B, which provides for the final salary schedules to be adjusted and approved by the chancellor based on recommendations. Under both of these provisions, what you will notice is regardless, information will be brought to this body from the external consultants so that you may have a conversation with them regarding their assessment, their analysis, and their recommendations of the salary schedules. And so those two options are brought forward today, and this includes the language and the conversation and the changes that were recommended at that September 8 meeting. On the record, just, we, from the chancellor's office, we do recommend bringing the consultant to the table, having the conversation with the board, and having any adjustments and changes informed by the board, and then do have a final approval so that we can make those tweaks and adjustments by the chancellor, but with conversation and consultation with the board. And so with that, I'm available for questions. And Crystal Abbott is also available in Reno, should you have any questions. And this is information because this does require two readings.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Are there any questions or comments for Interim Chancellor Charlton?
Yes, Chair.
Regent Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess it's just a comment. The Option A and Option B. Option B, I think definitely salary schedules need to come back before this board because that's our fiduciary duty. At the end of the day, we're the ones responsible for the money that's going in, going out, and what those salaries are, and also to be completely transparent. So it's not done in an office, you know, with consultants, but done in the public so that the public has an opportunity to weigh in on this also.
Regent Boylan?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Regent Perkins stole my statement, and I appreciate that. I believe it should be done in front of the board, too. Some of these things that just happened in the back, and we have no idea what's going on, and it's our fiduciary duty, like Regent Perkins said. And I take that very seriously because very often we hear about changes and different things, and we have no idea how they happened and who was responsible or what really is going on. So yes, I'd appreciate what Chancellor Charlton said. It would be great to have the person come and speak to the board. Thank you, sir.
Regent Downs?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. Appreciate the Chancellor Charlton for bringing this back. I understand the need to have two options in case the board decides that we don't want to have the final say in this. I'm not sure, I understand why we wouldn't want to. Reading through some of the arguments against Option A, the argument kind of concerns me, whoever wrote that, but because at that time, we will have someone present to present the methodology and how the salary schedule is devised. And I think that the selected body would have the wherewithal, knowledge, and skill set to make that determination for Option A. So, thank you, and I look forward to voting on this when it comes back for a vote.
Regent Carvallo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would agree with Regent Downs, especially on the briefing paper that states that the board may not have the ability to make this decision. And also, I have written notes here, so I apologize for not looking at people in the face necessarily. But I also want to say that in the briefing paper, it cites Title IV, Chapter 1, Section 2, which is the ethical code of conduct for Regents that states the following. "A member of the ENCE Board of Regents should honor the high responsibility that this elected office demands." And then it goes on to list several items, and I'm, the section, the subsection that is referred to regarding this agenda item is Item B. "Understanding that the primary role of a board member is policymaking, not administration, and distinguishing intelligently between these two functions." And I've had, I've had a few conversations with staff members and my colleagues about this. And I feel like this is a policymaking decision. I feel very strongly that Option A, that allows the board to weigh in and approve the salary schedules, is a policymaking decision. So I went through some items, and just for some background and some data, the board approves contracts for several positions. The board approved salary adjustments for some of our presidents in March, and I know that that part of this revision may address some of that as well. We also, the board also approves collective bargaining agreements. We are in the thick of historic COLA increases, and I know that normally we don't get involved in that, but when there are times where the legislature asks us to do that, the board has to be prepared to do that. We often are at the table, so to speak, in salary discussions. So I don't think that this is overstepping our bounds as a board to have the salary schedules come back to us. We also approve tuition and fee increases, capital improvement projects, real estate transactions. All these things are very important to our system. Also, the employee compensation and benefits, I went back on the February 3 special meeting. Our CFO presented a budget update to us. 60% of the total annual budget is spent on compensation and benefits. And again, if the Board of Regents is the entity that approves our financial management of our system, I think it's very appropriate for the Board of Regents to make that decision and be involved in that approval process. Our state constitution gives the Board of Regents the authority to oversee the financial management of the entire system. And NRS 396.280 states specifically that the Board of Regents shall have the power to fix the salaries of the academic staff of the system. So again, I don't think that this is overstepping my bounds. This is not an ethical question. This is a policymaking decision. This is a policy. And so I think it's very appropriate and reasonable for us to talk about this. It appears to me, and I wasn't able to research this far, but it appears that at some point in the past, the Board of Regents subrogated its authority to establish and approve salary schedules to the chancellor. And I don't know the history behind that, and I'm sure that there was, there were reasons for it. But I do think that because this has come back to the board in this way, it is appropriate for us to consider it as an approval item for the Board of Regents. I believe that the ability of the Board of Regents to approve the salary schedules is a policy decision, not administrative, which is why this is in code instead of procedures and guidelines. The chancellor rightly administers the policy to ensure that the schedule is distributed and used as prescribed by each of the institutions. And if there are adjustments that need to be made because of the approval of the salary schedule, that's appropriate for the chancellor to make those decisions. And I don't think that that should come back to the board. But I do believe that it's important for us to have the approval of the salary schedules. So it's my position, and I think it's a reasonable, policy-driven, data-informed position, that the approval of the salary schedules should be contemplated and approved by the Board of Regents. And I will say again that this is not an ethical issue. This is a policymaking issue. This is a policy, and I believe that we should support Option A. Thank you.
Regent Del Carlo?
Wow, that's a tough act to follow. That was well-stated, Regent Carvallo. Very well-stated. I, too, believe that Option A is the way we should go. Since that salary, the main one comes every four years, I've had the privilege of being part of it twice now. And the first time I went through it, it was great. I understood it. The consultants came in and all that, and this one was completely different. And that's why it has been confusing because we, it wasn't presented to us. It was given to us. And sometimes as a Regent, you just don't know what you don't know because we're not down in the weeds. We're, you know, we're at that higher level. But I totally agree. We are the policymakers. I understand the role of the CEO, who is our chancellor. And we set the policy. You administer the policy. So this, to me, is a major policy decision. I really don't think this board would have overlooked our community college salary schedule had we been involved. And I still would love to know why that was overlooked. I don't think that's right. It's not equity. I mean, it's just not right. You know how much I love the community colleges. I love all the institutions, but that's a special place in my heart. So I am totally in favor of Option A, and I look forward to this coming back and hopefully having unanimous support of this board.
Regent Cruz Crawford?
Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record. I was not going to say anything because it sounds like every time I raised my hand, it was stated. But I did want to say that I am in support of Option A, specifically because constituents and staff members that are affected with salaries often reach out to their Regents and so that we get to see firsthand the effects that it has on our community. So I want to continue to have that, be able to have that support for our staff members. And again, I echo the community college thing. I've been able to see the effects of unequitable salary adjustments in another hat that I wear, and I want to make sure that I do the best to make equitable pay as a Regent. So Option A for me.
Regent McMichael?
Yes. I'm not going to continue to expound on what has already been said. I, too, believe that Option A would be the correct adoption for this policy. And I believe that the majority of the Regents believe in that also. Thank you.
Regent Goodman.
I have a question, um, interim chancellor. You would be bringing all of this information before the board to provide feedback is what was said. And then the feedback would be given, and then you would make those adjustments with our feedback considered?
Yeah, so Regent Brooks through you to Regent Goodman. So yes, that was the, um, the position. And again, I, I appreciate all of the feedback, and we know that compensation is a top priority. It is, as Regent Carvalho said, I, I'm surprised that it's only sixty-four percent of the budget is represented by salary and benefits when you look across all of the different, um, sources and uses of our funds. Um, so yeah, it is, uh, the largest component, um, is salary and benefits. And benefits is a subset of the salary because much is driven on that percentage. So, um, regardless, I think the most important part also is that this, that communication happens with the board. But yes, any changes would be coming back, um, regardless of which option, uh, that presented to this body. So appreciate that.
Thank you. So I appreciate, uh, Regent Carvalho's research, and I, I think it's always so thorough. And so this is not, um, this is, this is not something I'm going to take a hard stance on. But I think it's important to recognize the fact that, um, this board tends to, uh, sometimes micromanage. And I think sometimes we need to trust our individuals that we hire to do their jobs. And so I'm, um, I, I'm not saying you're wrong, but, but I am saying that we need to be cognizant of that moving forward and that, um, we hire people to do their jobs. And, and for me, this seems something that is, um, a little bit more in, in your realm. And, um, I, you know, I, I, I appreciate all the comments, but I just wanted to, to put my, uh, my thoughts out there.
Thank you, interim chancellor. I, uh, I have to say, just so, just for the purposes of clarification, even though we're not taking action on this today, but certainly there's enough conversation that's being had where conversation may continue up until the point where we do take action. Um, for clarification, both of these options, um, present all findings to the board. Um, either option is going to allow the board to weigh in on how they feel about, um, either the process or, you know, um, for, for those who are taking a look at fiscal responsibility, um, those, those areas of conversation will take place with both options. And it, it just seems to me that while the board does approve various contract and, and student fees, certainly we are not part of contract negotiations. And we are not part of the line items at various campuses or the system office that would demonstrate why the movement of student fees has to take place and what the percentage should be or, um, what that looks like. And so it, it, it seems to me like this is one of those areas where, where quite possibly it, it could be interpreted as part of policy. And in, in context to why this is now before us, um, from what I understand, from a historical standpoint, at, at one time, the board did take a look at these items, and they did approve them. And then somewhere around 2018 or 2019, the board shifted and decided to put this, um, in the hands of the experts and then allow the chancellor to make the final recommendation. And that was done because it was determined that the members of the board just didn't have enough experience in these specific matters to be able to have the conversations that would take place to set where some of these bandwidths should be. Um, and, and while I absolutely appreciate, um, everybody's comments, particularly around fiscal responsibility, it, it does feel a little bit like oftentimes we are confusing management and governance. And in, in this particular instance, I'd, I'd be interested in taking a look at, um, what, what exactly does the second option offer for Regents? So that they, so that members of this body feel like they are part of the conversation and have a clear understanding of why some of the numbers are, are being derived and why the recommendation is being, being brought to the board. And that's, that's, that was really my comments. I don't know if there's any, uh, you know, anything else that you'd like to add to this conversation at this point?
Uh, for the record, Patty Charlton, uh, chancellor, uh, not at this time. I think we can bring this back again. This will be the first of two readings. And so it'll have to come back to this body. And so I want to thank everyone, one, also for your time, because I know we've had lots of conversations over the last several weeks as well, and then we will be bringing this back at a future time.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. We'll now move on to item agenda number five. This is policy revisions related to legislative audit findings. And I'll call on Acting CFO Lindsay Sessions to, to walk us through this.
Yeah, if it's okay, Chair Brooks, I'm going to just tee this up and then, uh, Acting CFO Sessions will come up. So again, the policies before you relate to, uh, the Legislative Council Bureau audit that you received in January of 2023. There was a series of recommendations in three primary areas. One was our self-supporting budgets, uh, capital projects, as well as the foundations. At your July 21st meeting, we, um, brought forward, uh, policy recommendations as it pertains to the foundations. And so we appreciate, um, that feedback. Uh, today, we know that there is a lot of language in these handbook and P and G manual additions and changes. And we need to bring these forward again to, uh, resolve any outstanding recommendations that we receive from the Legislative Council Bureau so that we can also, um, provide the final, um, basically conclusion to the governor's audit, uh, office as well. And so, um, as part of this, uh, we have, um, put together all of the, um, changes and additions for you. Um, Acting CFO Sessions is happy to walk through those in, in detail for you. Uh, but we also wanted to share with you that we're also in conversation and working with your internal audit, um, chief auditor, uh, Lauren Tripp as well. So that as we have these approvals and these recommendations, hopefully will be approved today, that we will also be, uh, working through that implementation and what that looks like for future audits of the institutions, um, processes that we can have to strengthen, uh, basically the feedback and to ensure that you have the information that's needed um, to ensure that policies are adhered to and practices, um, are effective and efficient, um, for the operation of the system. And so with that, I'm going to turn it to Acting CFO Sessions.
Good morning. Lindsay Sessions, Acting CFO for the record. Um, thank you for the time today. Just wanted to add that linked in your agenda and reference material were the full audits. Um, I will provide a brief overview, um, and then walk through the policy recommendations if that's needed today. But, um, and I'll take questions at the end. So on the self-supporting and reserve audit, there were thirteen recommendations, including that policies be developed surrounding transfers between non-state and state accounts throughout the year. That board policies be revised to provide clarity on the adequate, acceptable use of student fees and subsequent accurate, complete and consistent reporting. The development of policies to define self, define self-supporting programs, reserve and contingency accounts and for the reporting of accounts with high balances. On the capital construction at the universities, the auditors provided eighteen recommendations, including that policies be revised to clarify that state operating funds must not be used for capital construction, that the state public works division be involved where required for the monitoring of construction project accounts and to thoroughly review change orders, including scope and costs. So today we are requesting approval of the policy and procedures and guidelines manual updates in order to address the legislative audit findings identified during the performance audits of NCH. I'm happy to walk through each section of the proposed changes in detail. Want me to continue? Okay. So please turn to page three. Pages, pages three through six are revisions to Title IV, Chapter 9, Section C, Subsection 2. The revisions in this section address recommendations number one, two, and 11, which speak to the transfer of expenditures between state and self-supporting funds and the need to define self-supporting programs. The proposed changes are intended to provide clarity, address the matter of transparency, and most importantly, to provide oversight through enhanced board reporting. Moving on to pages seven through eight, the revision to Title IV, Chapter 10, Section 12, which covers the use of the capital improvement fee. Specifically, this section provides for documentation of the intent when multiple funding sources for a project are identified. This update addresses self-supporting audit finding five. New subsection five provides the addition of a reference to the guidance included in the PGM for the preparation and approval of contracts, which addresses capital construction finding five. New subsection six provides clarity on the timing of project closeouts as recommended in capital construction finding 12. Most importantly, new subsection seven adds reporting back to the board to address the theme of transparency and oversight for student fees in the self-supporting audit findings six through eight. Next, I'll take pages nine through 11 together, which cover Title IV, Chapter 10, Sections 13 through 15. These concern the use of student fees that are collected in the base registration fees. You'll see that the revisions in these sections are consistent in that they require reporting to the board and provide clarity with respect to the use of these fees, addressing the self-supporting audit findings for six and eight. Pages 12 and 13 are related to the tech fee. Here we have two tech fees, the regular tech fee and the integrate fee. Similar to the prior sections, reporting is added. In addition, the use of fees must be approved by the institution business officer, addressing findings for six and eight on the self-supporting audit. Page 14, Title IV, Chapter 10, Section 18, for the use of differential program fees includes technical cleanup only. Page 15, Title IV, Chapter 10, Section 19, concerns fee account balances. Subsection five provides for the proper accounting of student fees. It prohibits the commingling of student fees with other funds, addressing self-supporting audit findings for five and six. Page 16, Title IV, Chapter 10, Section 26, governs the agreement between the state public works board and NCH. This section is intended to address the capital findings two and three. The final handbook revision before you today is an addition in Title IV, Chapter 10, New Section 37. This is brand-new language and is intended to provide guidelines for the institutions. They may choose to adopt something more stringent beyond these guidelines, which would be subject to board approval if they go that route. This section is intended to address the self-supporting audit findings nine through 13. Similar to above, this section provides for a new reporting requirement through a template that will be developed by my office. Next, we'll move on to pages 19 through 25. These revisions are for the procedures and guidelines manual, Chapter 5, Section 2. These updates address the recommendations included in the capital construction audit. To begin, on page 19, additional language is added in order to clarify the definition of capital construction and additional reporting to the board is required. Moving on to page 20, roles and responsibilities are defined, and the state public works board delegation compliance is documented. These address findings nine and two through three. On page 22, we address findings six, seven, eight, and 10, with additional guidance and governance surrounding significant change orders. Here we implement additional reporting to the board primarily through the Business, Finance and Facilities Committee. On page 23, we outline procedures to address findings for 11, 12, and 13, which require reporting to the Labor Commissioner, proper project closeout procedures at the institution, the monitoring of project balances for timely reversion if required, and the timely closeout of accounts. Pages 24 and 25 amend the existing project checklist to remove an obsolete footnote. To summarize more broadly, the proposed revisions that we just walked through provide clarity, additional controls and increased oversight via regular and consistent reporting. The proposed revisions increase clarity by providing definitions and reporting standards, increase transparency by providing for regular and consistent reporting to the board, provide for accountability by increasing documentation standards, and require compliance with state and federal regulations. In addition, new handbook Section 37 implements policy and establishes guidelines surrounding reserve accounts as recommended by the legislative auditor. The proposed procedures and guidelines manual revisions increase clarity and transparency by formalizing processes for construction, project management, and the change order process. In addition, additional board reporting is required. You'll hear a theme. With that, I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions and request your approval of the handbook and procedures and guidelines manual revisions presented in the reference material today.
Thank you very much for walking us through that. Um, Regent Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for that report. I appreciate you like referencing back to which item that the LCB said and coordinating those through. That was really good. Um, I just have a quick question on number, uh, page number nine. Um, in item number three, it says $1 of the general improvement fee funds generated at each, each institution may be used for other purposes. I mean, $1? I, I don't understand why, I mean.
For the record, Lindsay Sessions, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, that was not a change that we made. It was existing in policy. So.
Yeah, so for the record, Patty Charlton, um, chancellor, uh, so yes, Regent Perkins, that was a policy revision that included, came many, many years ago, and it does provide that $1 at the discretion of the president of each institution.
I, I guess what would be the, what can you possibly, um, in today's dollars, what could you possibly buy with a dollar? I mean, it seems like it doesn't need to even, need to even be there.
So I'm sorry, it's a dollar of the per-registration fee. And so, um, it's just, so if there is a hundred-dollar registration fee, there's $1 that is allocated from that amount that is dedicated to the general improvement fee for the president to use. So if they have 600,000 credit hours, it would be, you know, a dollar of that.
So it needs to state $1 per credit hour or $1 per, it just says $1. So, and I guess it needs to be a little bit clarified, um, because it just says $1. It doesn't say $1 per credit. It doesn't say $1 per student. It doesn't say $1 per. There's no reference.
Yeah, and then there's also the actual distribution of the registration fee where it's.
Can we just put the words in there? Can we just put the words in there, like $1 per whatever it is as opposed to just $1?
Certainly. Thank you.
Thanks.
Regent Carvalho.
Thank you. I, that was quick getting to me. Um, first I want to say thank you so much to, um, Chancellor Charlton and, uh, Ms. Sessions for, for doing this. I know this is a lot of work and, um, and you were under a, a timeline. So I really do appreciate this. Um, and I, and I agree with you that clarity, transparency, and accountability are, are the results of, of all of this work. And, and a lot of it comes to the, the committee that I chair, so I, I appreciate that. There'll be more, um, there'll be more reporting, um, to that committee and also to the board in general. And I think that's all, um, good for all of us. Um, so I do want to thank you for that. I, I hope that, um, this doesn't impact your office's workload considerably. I, I do have concerns about that, um, but I hope that you can work through that. Um, and we had the, the opportunity to speak about this, and I, and I just want to put it on the record because I'm just still stuck on this one particular area. Um, on page 19, um, and I have it, of course I have it written down too. Um, annually, institutions will provide a report to the board identifying all capital project accounts separated by those with state funds of greater than 25% and all others. And I'm stuck on the all others. I, I, I'm just not clear on what exactly that is saying, if you can help me out. And I know we talked about this, and I just feel like I can't wrap my head around what that is.
So thank you, Regent Carvalho, for the record, Patty Charlton. Um, and so, uh, perhaps similar to the correction that Regent Perkins had talked about, and I know we've talked through it and we can certainly clarify this, but it's really, uh, bringing back annually to the board any capital project accounts that have state funds. back annually to the board any capital project accounts that have state funds of 25% or, and other revenue sources. So, it basically looks at the entire project, of which 25% or 25% may come from the state. You could have 25% from donor funds. You could have some capital improvement. You could have all kinds of different combinations. And so, I think it's just that clarity, it's the 25% of state funds and other revenue sources, perhaps, that addresses it.
I hate to be wordsmithing, but that helps me out a lot more. But I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Regent Del Carvallo?
Thank you, Chair Brooks, and I, too, thank you for all the hard work. This was a lot. That was a huge report in a small amount of time for us with some hard deadlines. She was very kind, I say, under the gun. You know, it was, especially with Patty, you coming in. So, I just, I think it's really, I agree, transparency, better accounting, more oversight, clarity, consistent reporting. On the reporting, I just want to make sure, I'm really glad that you're the one that's going to frame those reports, because when we have eight institutions, there's nothing I like better than having the same report to everybody, so we know what we're looking at. And it should just be, whatever report it is, it just should be standardized. And I want to make sure, too, that there's, I think it was on one of them, it showed it had to be in by February 1st or something, but just to make sure that there's time deadlines or the timings like the same. And I think it's really good that, and then this is what we do, this is our oversight. So, I think audits are healthy. I think they're good. I know that that is the state's job. This is public money. And I said before, you know, everything in life, we get audited for everything. I mean, the IRS goes after us and audits us individually and our businesses, and it's just part of human beings, and no one's perfect. They come in and find things and make recommendations, and I thought it was, it was fine with the three things they audited on, and now we've got the recommendations, and we'll just be better for it. And when they come back and audit us again down the road, they'll probably have other enhancements. So, this is all a wonderful cycle in how we live and protect our precious public dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regent McMichael?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second?
So, there was a motion to approve the policy revisions related legislative audit findings by Regent McMichael, second by Regent Carvallo. Before we continue, though, I just want to make sure that in the motion, we're stating the two changes that were requested. One was on page 19 by Regent Carvallo, so that the language would read "other revenue sources," and the other was a Title IV, but I'm asking Kerry to take a look at what page that was regarding Regent Perkins's request, so that as we complete the motion and approve it, it's done with those two changes.
So, Chair Brooks, for the record, this is Patty Charlton, Chancellor. That's included on page nine of 25, which would be Title IV, Chapter 10, Section 13, Use of General Improvement Fee.
Thank you, interim Chancellor. I appreciate that. Regent Carvallo? Regent Del Carvallo? Go ahead.
It's a compliment. She's 20 years younger than me. On page 19, I didn't, I wanted to point out in the title up there under Chapter 5, Section 2, Purchasing and Related Procedures, capital I, little g, what does that mean? What is that?
Lindsey Sessions, for the record, it's just the section.
Oh, okay.
It's just a, yeah.
Okay, I got it.
We didn't include the whole section. It's just reference to those subsections.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
And just for clarification, Regent Perkins, on that page number nine, where you brought up the dollar amount that was per student who's registering, what was the language that you had asked or requested that it?
It just says $1 of the general improvement funds generated at each institution. It should be $1 of the student fees? I'm asking the Chancellor.
My button's a little pushy today. You're sensitive. So, yeah, so under that section, which is Section 4, this would be, I think it's four. No, I'm sorry, it's Section 3, last sentence, $1 of the general improvement fee funds generated by each institution may be used for purposes designated by the President, so that would be $1 of the per-registration fee dedicated to the general improvement fee. There you go. Thank you.
That sounds great.
So, just so I'm clear, interim Chancellor, it would read $1 per registration fee?
Of that dedicated to the general improvement fee.
Okay. And then, Regent McMichael, I know that there were a couple of changes that were being made after your motion, and what I'd ask just for simplicity, right, is for the motion to be withdrawn and then for the motion to be restated with those two alibis.
Yes, I will withdraw my motion and restate the motion with the changes.
Thank you, Regent McMichael. And those changes would include on page 19, other revenue sources, and on page nine, per-registration fee of... Dot, dot, dot.
Dedicated to the general improvement fee.
Okay.
Yes.
I think, Regent, who had seconded that motion? Regent Carvallo, are you amenable to that?
Yes, I will still second that motion.
Okay. And so, again, this policy revision relating to legislative audit findings with those two alibis was made by Regent McMichael, seconded by Regent Carvallo. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there is no discussion, all those in favor of policy revisions relating to the legislative audit findings, please signify by saying aye or yes.
Aye.
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 Those who oppose, say no or nay. That motion passes, and once again, I know you've heard it from several Regents, CFO Lindsey Sessions, but we truly do understand what this looked like in terms of the amount of work that you had to do, and I can only imagine that as you were transitioning into this role to be able to support us while we're looking for somebody more permanent, that this may have been unexpected. And so, thank you very much for everything that you've done. We really do appreciate it.
And Chair Brooks, just for the record, Chancellor Charlton, I just wanted to thank all of the board as well. This has been very important for us to get this across the line so that we can close this out with the Governor's Executive Audit Office by the October 10 deadline. This is not over, however. We'll be working very closely, as I mentioned, both CFO Sessions, our future CFO, as well as Lauren Tripp of the Internal Audit Office, and all of our institutions, because we know that this is a heavy lift on the institutions as well. This does greatly increase reporting, but we think that that is good. That gives you the assurance. It also gives all that transparency that we talked about. And so, we know that there's also other recommendations that were provided from committees, but we just wanted to focus first and foremost on resolving those audit issues and then look forward to how we can bring more communication with the board. And again, thank you, because I know, Regent Carvallo, we've sat down with you many, many times, because this normally would have gone through the committee, the BFF Committee, and so we'll be back. Thanks.
Right, and also a note of thanks to you, interim Chancellor, for really having a vision in terms of what some of this looked like, and more importantly, an understanding of how you needed to move this forward with our acting CFO. So, again, thank you very much. We'll now move on to agenda item number six. This is the ENSI Chancellor search item, and I will once again call on interim Chancellor Patty Charlton to walk us through this.
I'm going to ask General Counsel Martinez for some assistance here, if that's okay. This is actually bringing back your policy as it relates to the Chancellor search and that process, but I think it would be appropriate to have General Counsel Martinez.
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, this item brings back the Chancellor search process, and you're provided with two options, Option A and Option B. In short, Option A brings back the ability for the board to establish an ad hoc search committee that would then look at the search process, and that was based on the board's comments when this came before the board last time. If there are any recommendations that come from that for changes of the policy, then those would be implemented prior to moving forward with the Chancellor search. Option B is leaving the policy as it currently stands, and a vote for Option B would be a vote to commence the Chancellor search immediately based on the current policy.
Thank you. Was there anything that you wanted to add to that, interim Chancellor?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Is there, are there any questions or comments regarding this agenda item? Regent Carvallo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll say that I have respected this process, and I think that the process has worked very well for us in the past. I'm reminded through some conversations I've had that this process has resulted in our eight, sorry, eight Presidents that we have, and I think that they are a group of unbelievably talented and dynamic leaders, and they came to us through this process that worked with each of their, each of their search and hiring processes. However, I think it is important to take a look at our policies sometimes and kind of open them up to new eyes with especially our Regents who have come on the board most recently. And we've heard a lot of concern from some of them, and I want you to know, those of you who are in this most recent class, I hate to say newer, I'm tired of saying that. You've been around for a while now, and I know you all have, you're not new to anything in this world. I know that. But I want you to know that I hear you all, and I think it's important to listen to your voices as well. And so, while I don't personally think that this process needs changing at this time, I do feel that this is a great opportunity for us to take a step back and go through the policy and see if we can make improvements or changes. Perhaps we could discuss how this relates to open meeting law. I do think a lot of this falls under open meeting law, and I also think it would be very informative to the board to hear from Presidents who have gone through this process, not only with ENSI but with other systems and organizations. We're asking as a board for more transparency and understanding what happens kind of behind the scenes, but I think, and I hate to speak for Presidents, but I think that maybe I can in this regard. Presidents don't always want all of their information out there when they just apply. It's important for them to be able to have some anonymity until they're in the finalist category. And so, I think that there's a struggle there in a gap in, I hate to say, understanding, but in where many of our board members believe we should be and where the process is right now. So, with all that said, I feel comfortable with Option A in some, in some form or another, whether it's a committee that's formed to discuss this, or I, and I don't know if this is appropriate to say so since it's not particularly on the agenda this way, or some sort of report by staff to be brought back at a later meeting, perhaps at our quarterly meeting in December, to talk through open meeting law and Chancellor searches. And I have to also wonder if this has implications for our presidential searches as well. So, this is, in my view, part of a bigger discussion, and like I said, I don't necessarily think that this needs to be changed, but I definitely hear a lot of the concerns that have been expressed over the last, what is it, seven months. So, I want to respect your voices, and I'd like to go with Option A. Thank you.
Regent Downs?
Mr. Chair? Oh, okay. Thank you, Chair Brooks. I'll be quick, Regent Boylan, Regent Downs for the record. So, I support Option A. I think that it'd be a really good idea to review the process for hiring both Chancellor and Presidents, especially given the fact we'll be hiring, I think we have openings we need to look after in the next, in the near future, I'll say that. But including how the process works in choosing a consulting company, who has input on that. I mean, it'd be really nice if the committee had input on how the consulting company was chosen or which one was chosen, especially given the light of the last search. And I'd also like to, I spoke into Assistant Counsel for a bit about this, trying to maintain or obviously being in compliance with open meeting law, but also trying to get some kind of transparency. It'd be nice if we were able to have the, make some change that allowed maybe two members of the committee, if the whole committee can't because of open meeting law, but two members of the committee have input on the three finalists being brought forward, not just the Chair of the committee. And I say that only because it gives greater perspective in what people might want in a new Chancellor, or a President. So, I think it helps the overall process if you have that extra voice in there. So, that being said, I would like to see Option A being adopted, and we can make some changes prior to the commencement of a search. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Downs. Before we continue, our Chief of Staff wanted to provide at least an explanation for one of the questions that you asked, and then our Counsel also wanted to help support some clarification. Kerry?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. Carrie Nicoloduski, Chief of Staff, for the record. It's on? It's on. I'm just not close enough. Thank you. I would just like to call the board's attention to the policy that's attached in your reference material, and if you look at subsection H, it explains how the search consultant is chosen. It's a team of three. It's the Chancellor, the Chief of Staff, and the Chief General Counsel.
And Jimmy Martinez, for the record, I just wanted to, since the question did already come up, I just wanted to point out for the full board, the issue that we deal with when open meeting law comes into play is one of the restrictions is any time the, this board, which is a public body, appoints a committee that has two or more members that are part of this committee or that are appointed by this board or are made up of a majority of this board's members or staff, that is a public body also. So, then, now you have the search committee, which is a public body. So, that's why when we get into it, when you start looking at the screening process, if you have two members of the search committee, part of the screening board or whatever you call that committee, the screening committee, you go through the same analysis, and you come up with, because it has two members making a recommendation to that public body, it, too, is a public body. So, it continues, you know, down that road, and the only way that we've found to make a break in the past is to have one member of the committee work directly with the search consultant to create a situation where you have a screening committee that is not subject to open meeting law. So, I just wanted to point that out, and I'd ask, you know, Special Counsel Wickson to chime in also.
I think... In fact, that is the way the statute reads, when you have two or more people, that becomes a public body, when the public body is... a public body, when the public body is, 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 when, when that group is formed to provide advice to the broader body. So in fact, I think you would have that issue if, if you convey that information to more than two people. Also in checking, when information, in, in, in checking the, the open leading, meeting law manual from the Nevada Attorney General's office, one of the ideas that has been posed in the past is circulating the resumes and circulating the information, and certainly that's a possibility. However, once you start, under the Nevada Open Meeting Law Interpretation of the Nevada Attorney General, once you start distributing, distributing that information, the Attorney General's office views that as a precursor to a decision, and in that regard, it's an invitation for deliberation, and so that in and of itself would also create an issue in addition to the policy provisions. But after our conversation, I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you.
Regent Downs?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again, Chair Brooks. So I guess I'm confused when I spoke with the, the general counsel, Wickson, the other day, I was under the impression that if you had a committee of five, then a minority of the committee, of which would be two, would have the ability to review and come up with a, a group of three to present forward. So if that is now, if I misunderstood that, that's fine, or if that's now changed, then that's fine as well, but I, I think it does behoove us as a group to review the search process for executive leadership in the system, just so that we can be, you know, up to date and as thorough as possible, kind of a part of the due diligence process.
Special Counsel Wickson?
Thank you, Regent Downs. You're exactly right, that was a discussion that we had. After our discussion, I went through to check the statutes and the law to confirm that the advice had been given was correct, and, and that's when, in seeking for that clarification, I determined that, in fact, if we have two people, it would constitute a public body. So certainly you're right, that's a discussion that you and I had, but I wanted to double check the law after we had that discussion, and that was a conclusion afterwards. So thank you.
And Jimmy Martinez?
So if the two was a subset of the five, that would be, so five would be the committee, and two would still form a violation of the open meeting law?
Yes, that's correct, because it becomes another subcommittee, it's a subcommittee of a subcommittee, and it still creates the open meeting law issue. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Jimmy Martinez for the record, I just want to point out that, that these comments on open meeting law are in no way intended to suggest that, that we have an opinion that the board shouldn't go through the process, because we're not saying there's no, there's nothing else for the board to consider, there's certainly other ways the board could, could look at this, and perhaps it's a, it's a screening committee of no members of, of that committee, and, you know, there's, there's other things to think about, so I just wanted to clarify that while we give this advice, it's, it's in no way meant to suggest that going through the ad hoc committee is not a reasonable process.
Regent Boylan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate that. Firstly, we saw what happened with this last committee and the debacle that took place, and we didn't find anybody to put in that position. Time wasted, money wasted, reputation wasted for this board, as well as for ENCHY. So I think, like the guy said, I think his name was Einstein, we keep doing the same thing, and trying to get another different result, then it's the height of stupidity. So I do believe that we, as a board, should wait till we have a new chair and allow them to decide then who to put on the committee, and have a new committee altogether. Secondly, Ms. Nicoloduski just stated that the chief of staff has to be on that selection committee. Now, that's, that's not quite right, because this policy was written when it was chief of staff and special counsel, and she is no counsel. So that needs to be changed. So we just can't go on old things that have been written, there have been changes, and I think we need to discuss that. We have a young man in the, in the audience there, bald fellow, instructor, I think, Robinson, he suggested that the universities and colleges have enough people, smart people, good people, and they could help us in these decisions if we believed in shared governance. We hardly believe in shared governance on this board, so I'm not, I don't know how Mr. Robinson thinks that we will believe in shared governance with faculty and staff. So, Mr. Consigliere, Mr. Jimmy, I just mentioned the old policy where it said chief of staff, it was chief of staff and special counsel. What is your opinion on that, sir?
Jimmy Martinez for the record, our office had previously made an opinion that the, the change in the title of that position was not, was not made with approval of the board, and therefore it's void. So I, I believe at this point, it would be an administrative change that would need to be made to go back through the handbook and just make those changes. So based on that opinion, I think, I think the policy, the way it currently reads, it would technically be the chief of staff, however, since the board voted to separate those positions, it may also make sense to have the special counsel also involved, but I certainly think that this is one of the sections that the ad hoc committee can look at and, and recommend revisions to prior to moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel. That's what I was expecting to hear, we need to make a change in that policy. So before we go ahead and do all these other things, I think that policy needs to be changed first. There's a lot of our policies, it seems, that need to be changed, but we're doing nothing about it. We talk about it, talk a good talk, but none of them are changing. So I'll request you to bring that forward, maybe I should say this in new business, to bring us the wording in the next meeting, then we change those policies before we do anything else in choosing how this process goes on. Thank you, Counsel Jimmy. Thank you, Chair.
Regent DelCarlo? Regent DelCarlo?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. I just want to say, I, I support option A for a couple reasons. I think the most important thing we do as regents is hire our chief executive and our presidents, and leadership starts at the top, and then it cascades down through the, through the organization. And it would be a good idea just to either form the committee, I'm even, Regent Carvalho mentioned having like a presentation done at the December meeting, because I think as a new regent, you really don't understand how the whole process works, and it is different because you're almost outside looking in, and I, I can say that this last search was a perfect storm, and I say that, and for failure, and, and there was a lot of reasons I've been thinking about why that happened, because I agreed with Regent Carvallo, this process really has worked well. We have some great presidents, I mean, yes, we've had some great picks. I have been part of ten, no, I had thought it was ten, but Regent Perkins and I were talking, and we've hired, the board hired a lawyer, we had, I think, three searches for that, so really thirteen, I've been through thirteen, I've been on some, most of those committees, and then chaired one. But what happened last time, I think, a lot of things, we had, and, and, you know, it's just the, what timing, we had a chair of our board, or a chair of our committee that had never been through a search, and we have not hired anybody at that level since 2023. I believe our last executive hired was President Brian Sandoval at UNR, and that would have been September of 20. Am I right? I think I'm right. So executive, say, president. So, so we didn't have really the understanding of that, and then the policy is, you know, you can read the policy, but you really don't understand anything till you're actually doing it, and I remember the first search committee I was on, I felt the same way. The committee met, and we talked about the profile, we had a couple more meetings than we had this time, but you met, and you determine the profile of what you're looking for, and that really drives the search, what it is that you're looking for. And then by policy, the chair and the legal counsel and the chief of staff meet and figure out the search consultant. I think we erred on the search consultant, I said that before, we used a search consultant that had never done higher ed before, and I say that-
I need to, I apologize, but we can't discuss that, that's not agendized, and they haven't been-
Okay, thank you, I'm glad you're here. National search consultants that I've seen work have gone out and found candidates that they know. I know President Helens was not looking for her job, but the search consultant we used knew of her through her work, and said, called her and said, this is a perfect fit, I think you'd be a perfect fit, but that's, so, that's how that works. So we, I just felt we had a perfect storm, we had two new regents that were on the committee that had, you know, had never gone through a search either, they, I think, got named to the committee two, three weeks into their time in January, so all of that together, and I don't think we really did our profile, what we were really looking for, I think that was a big part of it. So anyway, I just think if we took a little more time, we have a, I think, looks like a wonderful interim that's willing to stay on until we find that permanent, so let's get our policy right, let's all understand what it is, because I think the key to what we're doing is really the open meeting law, because I've seen searches where the person at the last minute, and this happened with you, Chair Brooks, the person an hour before you were going to make an announcement, withdraws their name. So there's a lot to these searches, and in higher ed, they don't want people to know they're even looking until they are the finalists, and that's a big part of it. That, I mean, really a huge part of it, you don't want to ever reveal your cards, because then your institution goes, well, why are you leaving? I mean, then you, it's a black eye for you, so I would support option A here, thank you.
Regent Breger?
Thank you, Regent Breger for the record. I appreciate all the comments that I have heard, special counsel Wickson and I had a lengthy conversation, and I fully, after 25 years doing what we're all doing here, respect and understand the open meeting law. That is the only thing we can't change. We can, I believe, and this is a question that I'm going to ask, change some of the policy, especially getting a search committee, I believe that can be, and I'm asking a question here, that that can be the full board, having, first of all, I think we need option A and a meeting that discusses only the chancellor's search, not other things, and let's just focus on one thing, because it's a big thing, it's our biggest thing that we do. I'd like to know if that one policy can be changed to where everyone together makes a decision on the, uh, group that we'd be using, and then I'll go on for some more comments.
Yes, you can, I mean, the, the, the board as a whole can engage in that policy discussion, or it can appoint a subcommittee, you can approach it in either way.
Right, and either one of those, that, those are the discussions I'd like to have, is there some committee of five, and then comes the full board to the full board, that's something we will all discuss. I do believe that it was not a failed search in the sense that there were not people that could have been the chancellor, it was a search because policy was followed. One person only can be that person to bring five people there, I don't agree with it. Fortunately, on the school board in the county, and which doesn't apply to here, we could have three people that were on a search committee, you can't do it here, and maybe the law's changed, I haven't been there in 18 years, I, you know, had another position in between. So I respect that, I think that's a non-discussion, other than maybe going to the attorney general and saying, what can we do, because what it does, it limits candidates, and limiting candidates is not healthy, and because why would you put your name out there? And I'm going to state, because I think this is going to be said, I'm not really for a blind search, due to the fact that if all 13 people are doing a blind search, I think it would be totally possibly, I'm not, I would want to hear more information, chaotic to where we all got there, and where were we at the end of that, and I don't know enough about blind searches legally, I know what they are, but legally I would want more information. So right now I would be against that, but that would be in our main discussion, when we had it on only a chancellor, and even president, because it would all go together, meeting that was where hopefully all 13 people could be here, whether it's on screen or in the meeting, to only discuss where we go, and I'd like ahead of time to know which policies may be changed and which policies may not, so when we get to that meeting, that we're not having to go through every policy, but the ones that we can. So I would like to ask if we can, I don't know how much special counsel and Mr. Martinez could do, and we don't need to, I mean, we have months, we have an amazing interim chancellor, I don't want us to be rushed and not get every question answered, every one of us be comfortable, and know that when we have that next search, whether it's in six months, eight months, or whenever, that we have every policy comfortable for everyone, between special counsel Wickson and our counsel Martinez, that they tell us what can be changed and what cannot. We already know we can't change the open meeting law, thank you, Carol, and I know that that we just have to chew on and digest and not be happy. Seriously, I'm, that makes me just, poor Mr. Wickson was very great, I'm not good on the phone, because if you pause, I think I can talk, but you might be breathing, so I have a hard time with that. And then I start talking, so I'm being honest about that, I need a person where I know he's breathing and we can, I can move on, so I, I admit that wholeheartedly, and my passion gets in front of me sometimes. So that's, I think that I've covered, that it will be, it sounds like one person, that is going to go through after the chancellor, the comrade has been picked, to be able to come back to and say, there's five people that we can now vet, if they don't want to go forward and gets to three, that's their problem, but I think it should be, and I think those will all be discussions that we would have later. I hope I've covered everything, knowing we can't change the open meeting law, second, that our two counsel tell us what we can change and why we can't change things, and we have a great dynamic meeting, and then we pick a person that does that work, and comes forward in a very honest manner, and has to be trusted to give us those three or five people, and then we vet them and make sure we make a wise decision, after we all decide how and who we need and want. That's the end of my discussion.
Regent Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, wow, that was a hard act to follow, too. First, I think I'd like to, well, it's going to be comments, let's see, I'm just going to, what I found, what I heard from the last search that we did, is that each of us wanted, on that committee, wanted more input, and we didn't get, we didn't get that opportunity because of open meeting law. However, shameless plug, with blind hiring, we would all be able to look at it, and that blind hiring process is now done by Yale, Google, and Delta, so there's plenty, and SHRM, which is the Human Resources Management Club or Committee, it's been done, and there's lots of white papers out there about how it can be done and who it can be done by, and there's also consultants that are very familiar with that process, so they could guide us through, when we look at those resumes, a metric that we could just check boxes, and therefore we'd be looking at completely on and only the person's qualifications, not where, where they graduated, not, like, sure, if they have a master's, yes, we'll see that on there, but it, it will be looking at the person strictly and completely on their merit, as opposed to proximity hiring. The other thing is, I think that was everything. Oh, and we would, we'd be able, all of us, when you have 13 eyes on it, you get different points of view, and one of the things that we didn't get in the last search is there wasn't a DEI lens, there was not a person sitting on that initial screening of those applicants that came from a DEI background, so those are some things that we should take a look at when we, and I am all for option A, so that we can decide how we want to change the process, if we want to change the process, and some steps going forward before we commence with the search.
Special Counsel Wickson?
Thank you, I, I just wanted to follow up, Michael Wickson for the record, we had a very, Regent Breger and I had a, a very positive conversation yesterday- conversation yesterday. The open meeting law is inherently frustrating. It's just the nature of the open meeting law. But I am going to make, just if I could, a couple of observations. First is, the Attorney General in its, the Open Meeting Manual cites the following language, which is, which it has adopted in its analysis from a California Supreme Court decision. But in essence, it says that a closed session may not be used to narrow down candidates or begin a selection process for the appointment. And, and I think that's something that we need to keep in mind in the rubric. In advising my own clients, and the suggestion I would make to the Board is, as you look at this policy, you need to consider a three-part rubric. And I think this is important, and again, I would advise any client who's making a policy change to think about these three questions. The first question is, was the original policy wrong? What was the rationale for the original policy? And was that rationale mistaken? If it was, then you need to change the policy. That's the first question you need to ask. The second question is, has the rationale for the original policy changed? Has the reasoning or the rationale or the logic behind the original policy changed such that a change would be appropriate? The third question is, the original rationale may be correct. The original reasoning for the policy may be correct. Circumstances may not have changed, but it still may be appropriate to change and clarify the policy. And that's the third question you need to ask. And I'm not here certainly to advocate for any policy change. But I think it's important that, for a productive conversation to take place, that that kind of a rubric or some sort of variation of that rubric be used, so that, that the conversations can be productive. But that's all I was going to suggest. So, thank you.
Regent Goodman?
Well, I have a point of clarification. One of our greatest Presidents at UNLV, who has recently departed, may she rest in peace, Carol Harder, who was the longest-serving UNLV President, as well as the first woman President. I was a student on that selection committee as the student body President. So, there's point of clarification on the search. Secondly, I do want to say that I feel like blind hiring may have a space in certain places, but I think in academia, it does not. And so, I do have to, we've had this conversation. I do not think that blind hiring is something that we should do for, for positions here in academia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. One second, let me pull up my information. Some of the items that have been spoken about today in regards to the previous search, were tough to hear. Were very tough to hear. Mr. Wixom just pointed out a few of the items that, about the rationale, if the policy was wrong, well, it was wrong with it in the first place. If it's wrong, have the circumstances changed? Circumstances changed, so the original policy should not exist? And if the policy was correct, just leave it alone. So, if the change for the chancellor search, the policy for all the president searches will also need to be restructured. On the previous search, the search consultant, who has the national searches, followed the recommendations of the regents, with the critical roles, the essential competencies, but the goalposts were moved. Was it an in-state? Was it out-of-state? Was it out-of-state? It was an in-state search. Do we need a chancellor who has an R1 background or not an R1 background? These items were brought up at the last minute. If the chancellor search process is going to begin, it's going to have to have a strong lens placed upon it. And that lens placed upon it is going to have to be for a proactive approach for the future of all searches throughout this entire system. It's going to be imperative that all searches are conducted in an impartial manner by individuals who have done national searches. The, bear with me here. The previous search was done correctly. The search consultant with national knowledge did the right job. We will find another search consultant. Hopefully, we'll find individuals still interested in the position. The goalposts will not be moved at the final moment. And we will, we will locate a point, vote, and select an appropriate chancellor that can lead the system of higher education. But we have to make sure that the, as Regent Brooks impressively noted at our previous meeting, that we can't open up the bank or the Brink's truck to provide this individual a significant amount of compensation. We have to make sure that it's going to be sustainable for the future of the system. It's going to be equitable, and it's going to be done right. In regards to an DEI standpoint of the previous search, I took great offense to that, because I do look at everything through a diversity lens. I do realize the importance of having individuals that can bring a different optics to the entire system. I know what it is like to be, to include diversity, equity, and most importantly, inclusion. I am part of that. I live that. I, I hope this next chancellor search goes well. I hope it's done on a sooner-than-later basis. But I know for a fact, just because of my lack of being on searches in the past, did not add fuel to the fire to have this previous chancellor search not come up with a successful hire. Because we found the right individuals, all of them, through a diverse lens, and we found them through a national search. It was not a failure. It was a success.
That we can't discuss prior candidates and discussions-
Yes, sir.
Are not clearly within the agenda. To the extent we're talking about a prior search as it relates to what's been agendized, we can do that. But if we start talking about individuals or policies, we can't do that.
Regent Borland?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. I'd have to agree with what Regent Brager said. She put it very nicely. What's the rush? We have a person who is in the position right now, who knows the system, who knows most of the people. And, you know, when you rush things, they always, you trip over your nostrils, and we know that. So, I don't see what the rush is. And I'd ask Mr. Counsel Jimmy or Mr. Wixom, what we can do about that at this time, since this is already an agenda item. My second thing is, I agree with what Regent Perkins said about blind hires. And I think that would solve a lot of our problems of qualified candidates not wanting to be known till they were sure that they were going to get the job or something. So, blind hiring would be perfect. We don't know who they are, but the whole Board would know the qualifications of the persons, that the person, that we will deal with in the future for this Nevada system of higher education. So, I think we need to take our time. We need to see if Chancellor Charlton has the, I don't know, the strength or the desire to be in this position.
The Board, we can't discuss the qualifications, performance of a specific individual. That's not agendized.
Oh, true. Thanks, Mr. Wixom. I appreciate, I'm not, I shouldn't have said that, but I do know that we have a person already in position, so what's the hurry? That was my point, not discussing anything about the person in position. So, the two things, what Regent Brager said and what Regent Perkins said, I support that a lot. Thank you, sir.
Regent DelCarlo?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. I make a motion that we, we go with Option A. I don't know if I need to read all that, but Option A and establish an ad hoc committee to review the policies and procedures governing a search for the chancellor.
Second.
I can second with a question. Did somebody second already? Oh, sorry, I didn't.
Regent McMichael seconded. So, there's a motion on the floor to approve Option A regarding the chancellor search, which would provide for the Chair of the Board pursuant to the bylaws of the Board of Regents to appoint members of a special committee and its chair. And then that committee would bring recommendations forward to the full board for consideration. And any changes to current policy would require two readings. That was seconded by Regent McMichael. I will ask if there's any further discussion on this. Regent Brager?
One clarifying question, Regent Brager, for the record. Would that be, I know you said ad hoc committee, or you would appoint people. Can that be after joint counsel here, where to go through those policies and be able to advise what can be, so we're not spending, you know, hours and hours and hours between ourselves when we don't know the, maybe the legal technicalities?
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, I think that could be part of the committee process.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want to make sure that that was, if everybody wanted to do that, we can't state that here, but thank you for that.
Regent Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in response, I guess, I didn't mean for anybody to get offended. However, there was no DEI present at the initial, initial look at the candidates. And what, and the idea counsel, who would not have been a board member, they would have been their advisors, they weren't even asked to participate. So, yes, some, you know, DEI is one of those lenses that we need to be keenly aware of and not just from one point of view.
So, the only thing that I could really add to this conversation, now that we're in discussion, is, is having gone through this process, it seems to me like there's two elements that exist really at the same time. And one is perhaps there is some room for, for, for change in some of the policy, because what I really, and particularly if this has happened in prior searches, there was no language in the policy to allow for the consideration or any, any movement should somebody at the last moment withdraw their name. And, and perhaps there could be something that maybe outlines what that might look like, up until including having whoever it is who's leading those efforts be, be able to come back to the Board and say, "Listen, something, something happened. I'd like a consideration of, of more time." Because perhaps that could be a buffer when, when these things occur. I think the other thing that's, that's happening at the, the exact same time where there may be some need for revision is the education of what the policy is and what it looks like and why it exists the way that it does. And, and are there areas where this needs to be changed? Or are there just other opportunities for board members to have a better understanding of why things move in the direction that they move? Both of the searches that were conducted were conducted within policy, and there's no getting around that. And, and what I've often said is, I may not necessarily agree with some of our policies, but, but I will follow those policies and hope that we are moving in best practice measures to be able to get, get the things done that we have to do as a Board. And, and so with, with that, if there's no more discussion, I'll ask if there's any, any more discussion from any regents. I'll ask Carrie to, just for formalities, again, for a roll call vote, again, the motion, which was made by Regent DelCarlo, which is to approve Option A for the new chancellor search, which calls for the Chair of the Board pursuant to the bylaws of the Board of Regents to appoint members of the special committee and its chair. And then that committee will then bring recommendations forward to the full board for considerations. And any changes in, in those policies are going to require two readings. That was seconded by Regent McMichael. Carrie, would you please take a roll call vote?
Regent Brager?
Yes.
Chair Brooks?
Yes.
Regent Brown? Regent Carvalho? Aye. Regent Cruz Crawford?
Yes.
Regent DelCarlo?
Aye.
Regent Downs?
Aye.
Regent Goodman?
Aye.
Regent McMichael?
Aye.
Regent Perkins?
Aye.
Regent Tarkanian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ariscotta?
Yes.
Regent Boylan?
Nick.
Motion passes.
Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item Number Seven. This is new business.
Excuse me, Chairman, could I ask a question?
Yes, Regent Tarkanian, go ahead.
Have we listed what we're looking for in a chancellor? For example, are we looking for a PhD? Are we looking for any special area of service? I just think that for the ZHAC Committee, that it would be helpful if they had some idea of what we're looking for in a chancellor.
Well, that's a, that's a good consideration, Regent Tarkanian. I, I think, and Vice Chair Ariscotta could, could speak to this, during that first search, there certainly were a tremendous amount of surveys that went out in terms of what, what folks are looking for in a chancellor. And then in the interim chancellor search that Vice Chair Ariscotta and I did, we, we certainly looked for those answers in terms of questions that we posed regarding what that looked like. And I can tell you that based on who we spoke with, there were, there were varying answers. But I would, I would offer that, perhaps that's something like you've suggested, that the, whoever the committee is for looking for the chancellor could, could have those conversations. And I think the, the-
I just wanted to place, excuse me, I just wanted to place that thought before everybody. Make sure-
Chair Brooks?
Thank you.
If, if I may, Jimmy Martinez, for the record, I just wanted, I just, this isn't an agenda item, so I don't want to get too far off, but what I will say is that what the, what any specific Board is looking for in a chancellor is going to change over time. So, that might be something that the Board wants to, that can be considered in policy language in terms of what the committee does. But I think it's already inherent in what any search committee does, is that they identify and what the Board does, when the Board is giving the direction to commence a search, what, what the Board is looking for and what direction is provided to a search consultant if one is, is requested.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And so now, we'll continue on with new business. Are there any suggested items of new business for consideration? Regent Boylan?
I apologize, sir. I'd like to change my vote in the last thing. Is that possible, Mr. Counsels? I would like to change my vote. I wasn't thinking, and I said, "Nay." It should be, "Aye."
Special Counsel Wixom?
The matter's been closed at this point in time. You'd have to reopen it and bring a motion for reconsideration, so.
Thank you. The matter's been closed, Regent Boylan, and there's no appetite to bring that back up.
No worries.
Regent Perkins, did you have something for new business?
Hold on. Okay, yes, sir. Again, to look at something electronic like where it can be acknowledged, like the little push buttons, so that we can see who votes for what, would be greatly appreciated.
I don't see that there's any additional new business. We'll move into public comment. Is there any public comment at GBC?
There's not public comment at GBC at this time.
Is there any public comment at the System Office in Reno?
None in Reno.
Is there any public comments here in Las Vegas?
Bill Robinson, Chair of the UNLV Faculty Senate, I was not going to public comment, but I feel kind of the need to now. Several things I want to say. First, you should do an inside-the-state, inside-the-NC search. You could do that- You could do that now. All of you could be the search committee. Everything could be public. You could act within your policy and do something that would work. And I think you could find people in the system who would be good. Uh, number two, the border regions has the power to submit a BDR to the legislature. Most states have a carve-out for higher education searches in their open meeting law. Even if you just recommended, tried to pass a change to the law that says that members of the border regions could see the vitas of all the candidates that make suggestions without those becoming public documents, that's probably not a huge change to the law. And you might be able to get it in, to give up and not use your power to try to put a BDR through, I think, is a mistake. I want to remind people that higher education searches, we advertise in the fall, we hire in the spring. Part of the problem that we had the last search that nobody mentioned is that we tried to do it over the summer, which is not hiring season in higher ed. So if you, if this process before writing a new policy doesn't start till the spring, you're really, you're looking at, um, doing, starting the, I know, I'm scaring her, but starting the, starting the search next fall and then hiring spring of '25. So, uh, put that all in there. And then lastly, I still think, and I know you're going to talk about a governance committee next time, and I think that's a great idea, but I still think the board should have a come-to-Jesus meeting, where there's nothing, no action on the agenda, you're just talking about what's on your agendas and how they get said and who does what and how the committee and, and all those things, so that governance committee has some idea of what the board thinks is valuable before it tries to meet. Thanks.
Patrick Villa, for the record, V-I-L-L-A. I'm the faculty senate chair at CSN, and I just want to share my experience with hirings. I've been on, like everyone else back here, tons of hirings from administrative assistant, faculty members, directors, VPs, and a little bit on presidencies back in the day. But what I've seen is, there's always this rush at the end. And that's, we, we alluded to that, that's a problem. I really believe you have to work backwards from when you want the person to start, go back how long you want the overlap to be. I'm talking about our president and another president who needs to be hired. It's, it's just as important as the chancellor, but you need to work backwards and see, okay, then there's the vetting, the public, you know, forums, the first interview, the second interview, the third interview, whatever the case, and you have to take that time, and that's when you need to start. And for something like the two presidents and the chancellor, it probably needed to start a while ago, a month ago, two months ago. And I understand chancellor is important, I know Patty wants to be here for three, four more years, but, um, that the presidents, I do believe, you don't need to wait until the chancellor part's wrapped up before you start those two searches. I'd really like to see you get those going soon. And, and I don't know why, even if you're exploring the options, you can start the announcing, get the ball rolling, get the job announcement out there, and then you can still deal with how you, as the board, are going to decide and how you're going to make it, open, close, whatever it needs to be. But if you wait until you've got that process done, it's too late to start the search. But you got to get the job announcement out there, and I'm talking about all three positions. Thank you.
SCS, is there any public comment on the phone?
There are no callers in the queue at this time.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. This meeting is now adjourned.